We'll call it a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for August 15, 2017, 4:30 PM to order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, what you wish.
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. At this time, we're gonna go to item number 4A. We've got Communications. We've got an oral presentation by representatives of the Minnesota National Guard regarding the project plans and timelines for the future National Guard Armory shop facility project, adoption of the resolution, and the formal city presentation of the deed transferring 30 acres of land to the city, or city-owned land to the Minnesota National Guard, state of Minnesota. This time, we've got General Nash. I think he wants to start out.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, President Schmitz, council members, ladies and gentlemen. It's a privilege to be here on this occasion of transferring land for the new field maintenance shop and armory here in New Prague. I am Major General Rick Nash, the Adjutant General for the state of Minnesota, and I'm also the Commissioner for the Department of Military Affairs. Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to have a point of personal privilege in that I would like to also introduce a number of individuals here today because of the land transfer, and that's State Representative Torkelson and State Senator Dames, as well as a special welcome to Mr. Sean Schlescher, who is the District Representative for Representative Tim Walls. Congressman Walls, as many of you know, has been instrumental in shepherding this project through the federal process for the past seven years to make sure it stayed on track and that funds would become available for not only in the state of Minnesota from the federal side, but also with our help from our legislative partners in the state of Minnesota. As Colonel Suket will soon elaborate on, these construction projects were one of my highest priorities since I became the Adjutant General seven years ago, and to ensure that New Ulm stayed at the head of the list, we have 61 facilities across Minnesota in needs very similar to New Ulm. But it was important enough for us to look at New Ulm as being the site that needed one with an armory that was built in 1914, now over 103 years old. And as we discussed earlier in our meeting at the site, we now believe that the New Ulm Armory is the oldest that we have in our portfolio of facilities across the state of Minnesota. But your historical armory has certainly served your city and the citizens of Minnesota now for more than a century. And also, the 66-year-old maintenance shop is also ready to expand to meet the needs of the modern military equipments that we are assigned to today in Minnesota. And we are consolidating, as I mentioned, a couple of other facility sites, those in Rochester, and a site was gonna be built in Mankato, which will now be relocated in the future to here in New Ulm. And so we'll expand the capabilities here with that new FMS shop, and it will also add additional full-time employees to work in the city of New Ulm. This land transfer will also allow Minnesota National Guard to better serve the citizens of New Ulm, but also importantly, that you might also note is that we will increase the number of permanent full-time and part-time jobs in the city of New Ulm with this expansion. And as Colonel Suket will tell you, that this $34 million construction project will require a number of vendors and contractors, many of whom we would expect to come from the city and the county of, in Brown County, to start that project, construct it, and then in the future to be able to maintain that. And we project the increase of the total economic impact for the city of New Ulm from the National Guard's presence, continued presence, will be up from last year's figure of approximately $2.6 million. And once that project is complete and we're occupying all the facilities, it'll be a $3 million economic impact to the city of New Ulm. And I might say that you have made a wise choice for the city of New Ulm, its citizens, and the area itself with this new facility and the capabilities that it will be able to serve in this part of Minnesota, as well as the great training facility for our citizen soldiers, and many of you were citizen soldiers that served in the old facility years ago. But not only financially, but also the new National Guard Readiness Center will continue to be a hub, we would expect, for community activities and involvement. And this is one of our priorities when we build new facilities, to ensure that it's available and open and accessible to the citizens. The Minnesota National Guard is proud of its long and outstanding relationships that we've had with New Ulm, and we're looking forward to this new, exciting chapter that will certainly serve us, I believe, for another century. So Colonel Sol Suket is the Minnesota National Guard's Chief Facilities and Maintenance Officer, and he will provide an overview of the scope of this project. Many of you have worked with the former Facility Management Officer, Colonel Larry Hurkey, who is now retired, but is now working in our state government, doing the same type of work to increase the capabilities of all of our state facilities, and as taxpayers, we would want him to look after. So again, thank you for having us today and your great and generous New Ulm hospitality. So, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Colonel Sol Suket. I'm the Construction and Facilities Management Officer for the Minnesota National Guard. Quickly, there's our agenda. We'll talk a little bit about the existing facilities and then the facilities that we plan to construct to replace those. So the first slide here talks about the existing field maintenance shop, and of note, it's only about 25% of the size that we need by the DoD construction criteria for the number of full-time employees we have working there and the maintenance that we're doing there. So it's significantly undersized. Part of that is because we're trying to reduce some of our maintenance and construction, or excuse me, maintenance footprints, and by assigning more mechanics to different footprints and reducing other outstate maintenance facilities, we brought more employees here. That, of course, has resulted in it being undersized. It is 66 years old. We've done a new addition, replaced the roof, but it's getting to that age where, for us, with the size that we would need and the space and the lot that it's on, of course, we can't build to the size that we would need to do some more consolidation of our maintenance efforts in the New Ulm area. Go ahead, next slide. So the other piece of this project effort, of course, is to build a replacement for the existing New Ulm Readiness Center. It's over 100 years old. If you're into architecture, you know, it's a beautiful building, has that castle look, and we have done a lot of interior work on it. We brought it up to ADA compliance and put an elevator in in the last 10 years, and have made some other improvements to it. But the reality is, it's also undersized. It's less than half the size that it needs to be for the soldiers that we have assigned there. And this isn't a unique situation. A lot of our facilities are roughly half the size. Our average square footage across the state is at roughly 50% of what the DoD build criteria would be for the units assigned there. And so this building, of course, being 100 years old, for us, we're looking for opportunity to build a new facility through the military construction process. So that's DoD-funded construction, and one that would be to the size that we need and also have all the correct spaces. Obviously, when this building was constructed, we didn't have things like computer simulated training scenarios, and a lot of the equipment that the average soldier would have carried when this facility was constructed is, are literally museum pieces today, and the soldier today is drawing multiple bags worth of individual equipment. So supply spaces are, you know, one of those areas that were significantly undersized in an older facility like this. Administrative office space, you can do quite a bit with that, but if you don't have enough shelving and supply storage space for all the new equipment that the modern soldier carries, you have to expand. So this slide gives some details about the two construction projects that the Minnesota National Guard will be undertaking in New Ulm. The first one is for the field maintenance shop, and as you can see, it'll result in a new maintenance facility that's almost 35,000 square feet. That'll be an $11 million construction project. It's 100% federally funded. It is on the FIDEP. That's the Fiscal Year Defense Program for 2020. And so on the FIDEP, the year you're listed is the year you put a shovel in the ground. So typically, construction projects of this size, you have about two years' advance on your design. And so we expect in October, when we start FY '18, to receive design authority from the federal government to begin the design of this facility, and then the construction dollars would come online in fiscal year 2020, so federal fiscal year 2020. Roughly an 18-month build, and we would expect to open the doors then sometime in the late summer or fall of 2021. The Readiness Center itself is not on the FIDEP. It's been our number-one submission for the last three iterations. We were relatively confident that it would make the cut this year. There was 400, over $400 million in military construction nationally for the FIDEP 2022. We were right at the cut line and didn't make it. It will continue to be our number-one submission. The year that's actually going to be looked at by Congress, we submitted last year, and it was our number-one submitted last year. So we expect it to be on the FIDEP for year 2023. So that'd be shovel in the ground 2023, with design starting in fiscal year 2021. And again, the size of that facility, 63,000, 64,000 square feet. It'll be 18 months to two years' build. I would like to point out that when you hear those years, it's, it can be very difficult to understand, well, why are we talking about getting land? And we've actually been working with the city for almost two years now to get land to do these construction projects on. And I will tell you that I was in DC last week for a course, and part of the course was talking about military construction and what states are referred to as misfiring, which means that the year you're supposed to put a shovel in the ground, you don't put a shovel in the ground. There were several projects on the list, some of them they're supposed to get design money in October, that were at risk of misfire. And every single one of the roughly six on that list, the number-one reason was land, and then land and NEPA, so their National Environmental Protection Act research on the ground they had. So there are states who are competing in the same program as Minnesota for these federal dollars, who are supposed to get their money and don't even know where they're going to build yet. And so, working with a city like New Ulm, what seems like a decade in advance really is the right way to do business, because we will then, when we submit our projects, we're able to know that we have the land available. We know where we're going to build it. Otherwise, you're potentially asking an architect firm to start designing you a building, and the foundation and concrete designer is gonna ask you, well, are we building it on sand, or clay, or bedrock? And the architect's gonna wanna know, are you orienting it east, west, north, south? And if you don't even know where you're going to build it, you can't answer any of those questions. And all that means is, if you start down that design trail, it just ends up costing the taxpayers more money. And so, we're very thankful for the opportunity to partner with New Ulm and secure the land, so that we're confident that when we, when we are funded, there will be no holdups and no misfires for Minnesota. And I think that, you know, that bodes well for us regionally, but also nationally. It helps our reputation when we compete for these types of projects, that we're not asking for money without any idea about actually where we're going to spend it yet. Slide. So that's kind of a way to segue into, we're able to show our supporters out in NGB the land that we project to build these two facilities on. So this slide is just a map and a depiction of a possible layout and a configuration of the two facilities and how they would fit on the site. With the parking lots, the facility for maintenance has a large military vehicle storage parking footprint, and then, as you see depicted there, because it's over a one-acre construction project, there's some stormwater prevention and retention basin requirements that we'll put on the site as well. Obviously, as we get into the design, we'll work with an architect firm. We'll do some soil testing and boring and figure out what the best, where the best place is for both of these types of structures on that footprint. But this is just an artist depiction, and helps, as we were looking over the soybean field a while ago, at least has a picture about, well, what would it look like? Because it's, it's difficult for me to visualize it out there on the site, but a map with some cookie cuts on there, I can visualize. So, slide. And lastly, and General Nash talked a little bit about, you know, some of the economic impacts. And of note, I usually look at this from, if it was a business, how many jobs are we creating? The field maintenance facility will have roughly 15 full-time mechanics. The Readiness Center will have approximately 20 full-time personnel working there. So that's a combination of, in the mid-30s, of individuals who will be working in New Ulm, presumably because this is where they work. They'll live in New Ulm or in the area. And so, you know, this business, if you would think of it like that, is gonna employ 35 individuals who are gonna, you know, live in New Ulm and send their kids to school here and enjoy New Ulm and everything it has to offer. So we wanted to provide that just as a, some information about what the buildings will actually do in terms of economic impact or employment. And then, of course, the drilling soldiers, the Readiness Center will have approximately 250 soldiers under its current configuration that will come to drill there. The farther south you get, the farther away from Camp Ripley you get, it is more convenient for the units to drill at home station. It's a long drive to head up to Camp Ripley for two days of training if you're gonna spend half of it on the road. And so, what we see is, a lot of these units in the southern state spend more of their homes, or more of their training time at the home station. And that's another reason why it's, it's a great opportunity for us to build the building they need with the classrooms to conduct training, with the SIM spaces to conduct training, and the maintenance footprints to conduct training, so that they can maximize that time at home station. And we talked about the total construction project. And then, one of the things that keeps me up at night, and I won't be the guy doing it, but the 62,000-square-foot facility is 62,000 square foot of roof that's gonna have to be replaced in about 20 years after we've cut the ribbon on that thing. And so, there's that continual, ongoing maintenance. And those are the types of projects that we also see local contractors being much more able to compete, because they don't have mobilization costs to go do a roof versus coming from the metro area to go do a roof. And so, there will be a, an ongoing economic impact, just in terms of a continual maintenance and construction upkeep footprint for those two facilities, I would say for, you know, 65 to 80 years after they're built. So, next slide. So ladies and gentlemen, that concludes my, the formal piece, the presentation. I just wanted to have the opportunity to, for those of you who may not have seen it or understood what the project would look like, and what the dollar values, and why we, we need to do these two projects. I guess the one thing I might not have mentioned, the Readiness Center construction is also 100% federal. So both of those projects will be built with federal funds. And then after that, the day-to-day operations, that 62,000-square-foot roof for the Readiness Center is usually a 50-50 mix. We'll pay half the bill with state money, half of it with federal money. The facility maintenance, or the field maintenance shop is 100% federal, though, for all of its expenses, including utilities and ongoing maintenance. Are there any questions from the council?
Mr. President, I got, and I know we're talking about a 62,000-square-foot Readiness Center. For the general public that's not, that's watching here today, what, you mentioned there's some classrooms in there. What else is gonna go on in that particular building? That's a large building.
It is. So, one of the things we do now is we provide onsite storage for the soldiers, the old-timers would here call TA-50, but basically, it's, it's all of your cold-weather gear, your helmets, your backpacks. So we have a pretty large supply storage footprint for those things. And that allows all the equipment to be centralized, centrally stored. And with the amount of gear that you have now, it's almost a hassle to try to haul it back and forth. It's multiple duffel bags worth of equipment. So there'll be large supply storage area. We also have a lot more equipment, you know, the soldier toys. So it's not just the rifles anymore. Now we have specialized mine-detecting equipment, additional radio and communications equipment. Another requirement for the new facilities now is, you heard me mention simulation spaces. And so, some of you might have seen the laser tag. Well, so we have a, essentially, a laser tag system that allows you to set up in a room like this, and each soldier wears simulators and a, you know, essentially a virtual reality-type helmet, and do training as if you were walking around in the woods, but in a room, without having to go out in the woods. And of course, you're not using live ammunition. You're using air-powered and laser-powered devices. And so, again, talking about that home station training, it's not just, well, let's go to home station, let's draw our rifles, and we'll go walk around in the woods and maybe have some blank ammunition. You can actually go in in that simulation space and do real command and control and communications. You can, you can be walking through the woods, or if you want to, you tell the computer, we wanna be walking through a building, or we wanna be walking down a street. And so, simulation space is one of the things that's included in new, new construction for these Readiness Centers as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Take care of yours.
No.
Cool.
General, I think we'd like you to come up, and for our photographer friend and for our audience. They'd rather see my back, but this way they get to see your face. Here is the quit-dee claim. The property is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
And you're going to be here for the ribbon cutting, correct?
I'll make a point of being here.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have to have motion.
Yep.
Okay. At this time, I'd entertain a resolution.
I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, transfer the quit-dee claim, deed, 30 acres of land for the purpose of constructing an armory and field maintenance shop facility by the Minnesota Armory National Guard, state of Minnesota.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
Maybe just a comment on behalf of City Council. This was a project, you know, starting several years ago, a collaborative effort from so many different groups, our elected officials, our National Guard folks, the City Council, the public especially, that came out and, and supported this entire project. So thanks to everybody to make this work and, and keep this facility in our community where it's been for 100 years and hopefully for many more decades beyond this. So thanks again to all of you that came here tonight. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may please, so you've handed me the deed to the land. I've got that, I know that, but I look on the top, and there's already a deed tax due of $1.65.
We'll take it in one lump sum. Maybe the mayor's got it in his pocket. More discussion. Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. This time, we'll go on to item number 2A. Conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the final plat of Oak Hills Bluff 7th Edition located at 1442 to 1448 10th North Street. Public hearing? Anybody like to be heard?
They're leaving en masse. Nobody wants to be heard.
Nobody wants to get up. All right. Seeing nothing?
Seeing nothing. I will make the motion to close the public hearing and offer the resolution to waive the reading, approving the final plat of Oak Bluff 7th Edition located at 1442 to 1448 10th North Street.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Offer the resolution, waive the reading, closing the public hearing. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5A. Consider a motion to contract with Stone Brook Engineering Incorporated to provide ADA transition plan and inventory.
Mr. President, I believe you-
Did I miss one?
Did I miss one?
All right. Let's go back to 3A. Consider a motion to prove the issuance of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for a State Street Theater Incorporated.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and that's for September 23, 2017. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. Okay. Now, number 5A. Consider a motion to contract Stone Brook Engineering Incorporated to provide ADA transition plan and inventory. Got some on that, Steve?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. The City Council authorized a request for proposals on this particular project. And just to be perfectly clear, this is for an inventory and plan, transition plan for infrastructure within the public right-of-way. Sidewalks, trails, head ramps. Does not include facilities such as City Hall and other buildings that the city has. That's, that's kind of a different animal. But moving on, we solicited and received seven proposals, and I just lost it here. The committee ranked the proposals, and you can see our final ranking, one through seven. Frankly, the top four were all quite impressive. There was a 30% ranking on the cost of the fees, so the Stone Brook ranked quite high in that. We have some familiarity with this firm. They are specialized somewhat in this area, and we would like to move ahead with awarding this contract if so, if the council would agree with that.
Thank you.
Being the city engineer is comfortable with it all. A motion to contract with Stone Brook Engineering Incorporated to provide the ADA transition plan and inventory in the amount of $34,200.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
There's quite a difference in our, different rankings, or not rankings, but in our amounts from 34,000 all the way up to 118,000. This came in at the lowest amount, but yet it's really a well-written document and very thorough, and I was pretty impressed with the writer. I have some assumptions that it's lower in cost primarily because it's a small company, based on how I read it, that they have not very many staff, and it seemed like they really know what they're doing. So I say, let's give them a shot.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I guess maybe for Steve, is this the first time we've used, I mean, that we've done a study like this within our city?
Yes, Mr. President. This is something that's technically been a requirement for some time. Just recently, if you may recall, I mentioned that any federal grants require that this be in process. It's kind of a caveat to receiving grants, and we have got one scheduled for 2019, so we're just gonna have to move ahead with it.
Sure.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. Item 6A. Consider a resolution to accept $1,000 monetary donation from the anonymous donor toward future firearms purchases for the New Ulm Police Department.
I'll offer, I'll offer the resolution. Waive the reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Offer the resolution. Waive the reading. Any more discussion?
Can't write a, can't write a thank-you letter to an anonymous person, but thank you.
PD knows who the anonymous person is, I think.
Okay.
I can write the letter.
Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 6B. Consider a resolution to prove the city New Ulm to act as the fiscal agent for grants from the New Ulm Area Foundation for Program organized by the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce.
I will offer the resolution, waive the reading, to approve the city New Ulm to act as the fiscal agents for the New Ulm Area Foundation for the following programs organized by the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce. Network New Ulm Community Leadership Program in the amount of $1,500 for travel to St. Paul for meetings with local legislators, Minnesota Chamber, and significant sites, and rebrand, rebrand, and New Ulm Area Career Expo in the amount of $2,500.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 6C. Consider a resolution setting the fees for special vehicle permits at $50.
Being that I sat in on the subcommittee, President Schmitz and myself, and this number was discussed at the subcommittee's level and then brought to council, offer the- offer the-
was discussed at the subcommittee's level and then brought to council, offer the resolution setting the fee for special vehicle permit at $50.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion?
I'm not a real fan of $50 when we have chicken fees at $40, but it just seems a little low, and it's a recreational vehicle, and it's, for those that, I don't know, I just thought it seemed a little low, but.
Oh, one comment we can look at, though, the resolution will set the fee for the remainder of 2017, so it does come right back in 18.
Yeah, so we should be thinking about that, I just see what the rest of you think about it, but I just like, seemed a little low.
It's a three-year fee, so.
That even makes it worse, yeah.
Did we survey any other communities, what the fees were?
I know of a few, and they're considerably less, but it's just smaller towns too, so.
Sure.
It's some research that could be done between now and next fee structure.
Yep, which will be coming up fairly soon, too.
But if they do take them out now right away, it's going to be good for two years, so.
And it's per driver, though, you know, so it's just for one individual, if you want a husband and a wife to be able to do it, you know, it's going to be $100.
Not on the vehicle.
And maybe it's not that it's a moneymaker, but what we're trying to do is cover our costs, and I don't know what the office time is going to be in processing and filing and maintaining this, and the law enforcement costs of, you know, following through with this, enforcing it, I just think that 50 is not, it's pretty low.
I guess we'll find out.
Yeah, can always change it.
Any more discussion? See you none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6D, first reading of ordinance number 17-016, Fifth Series, amending section 904 of the City Code, City of New Ulm, relative to zoning in said city.
Roger.
Mr. President, ordinance number 17-016, Fifth Series, City of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, and ordinance amending section 904 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city. Be ordained by the city council of the City of New Ulm, Section 1, that the zoning map referenced in subdivision 2 of section 9.04 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm is hereby amended as follows. Following described property heretofore zoned R1, single-family residence district, is hereby re-designated and rezoned to R3, multiple-family residence district. That part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th North Street, First Edition, according to the recorded plat thereof, City of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, described as follows. Commencing at the northwest corner of the 10-foot alley dedicated per Milford Heights First Edition, west of Block 1, Milford Heights First Edition, thence north, 00 degrees, 14 minutes, 17 seconds west, on the west line of said Lot 1, Block 2, 5th North Street, First Edition, a distance of 490.53 feet, to a point on the westerly extension of the south right-of-way line of Beinhorn Street as dedicated per Milford Heights First Edition, thence north, 89 degrees, 40 minutes, 16 seconds east, on said westerly extension, a distance of 180 feet to the point of beginning, then south, 00 degrees, 14 minutes, 17 seconds east, a distance of 242.63 feet, then southerly, a distance of 73.07 feet, on a tangential curve, concave to the left, having a radius of 330 feet, and a central angle of 12 degrees, 41 minutes, 10 seconds, thence north, 76 degrees, 03 minutes, 32 seconds east, not tangent to said curve, a distance of 429.77 feet, thence northeasterly, a distance of 199.75 feet, on a tangential curve, concave to the left, having a radius of 150 feet, and a central angle of 76 degrees, 17 minutes, 50 seconds, thence north, 00 degrees, 14 minutes, 17 seconds west tangent to said curve, a distance of 68.43 feet to the south right-of-way line of said Beinhorn Street, then south, 89 degrees, 40 minutes, 16 seconds west, on the said south right-of-way line and its westerly extension, a distance of 540 feet to the point of beginning, contains 3.05 acres of land. Section 2, that the city engineers hereby ordered to make the necessary alterations to the official map of the City of New Ulm to reflect these changes. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect and shall be enforced 30 days from and after, or from and after its adoption, approval, and publication.
Thank you. All right, item 6E, first reading of ordinance number 17-017, Fifth Series, amending section 9.04 of the City Code, City of New Ulm, relative to zoning in said city. Thank you, Roger. Again.
Mr. President, ordinance number 17-017, Fifth Series, City of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, and ordinance amending section 9.04 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city, be ordained by the city council of the City of New Ulm, Section 1, that the zoning map referenced in subdivision 2 of section 9.04 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm is hereby amended as follows. The following described property heretofore zoned R1, single-family residence district, is hereby re-designated and rezoned to R2, single and two-family residence district. That part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th North Street, First Edition, according to the recorded plat thereof, City of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, described as follows. Northwest corner of the 10-foot alley dedicated per Milford Heights First Edition, west of Block 1, Milford Heights First Edition, thence north, 00 degrees, 14 minutes, 17 seconds west, on the west line of said Lot 1, Block 2, 5th North Street, First Edition, a distance of 490.53 feet, to a point on the westerly extension of the south right-of-way line of Beinhorn Street as dedicated per Milford Heights First Edition, thence north, 89 degrees, 40 minutes, 16 seconds east, on said westerly extension, a distance of 180 feet, then south, 00 degrees, 14 minutes, 17 seconds east, a distance of 242.63 feet, then southerly, a distance of 218.18 feet, on a tangential curve, concave to the left, having a radius of 330 feet, and a central angle of 37 degrees, 52 minutes, 55 seconds, then south, 38 degrees, 4 minutes, 04 minutes, 31 seconds east, tangent to said curve, a distance of 31.84 feet, then southwesterly, a distance of 30.09 feet, on a non-tangential curve, concave to the left, having a radius of 230 feet, a central angle of 07 degrees, 29 minutes, 41 seconds, and a 30.06-foot cord that bears south, 48 degrees, 10 minutes, 38 seconds west to the northeast corner of Lot 1, Block 1, Milford Heights First Edition, then south, 89 degrees, 40 minutes, 16 seconds west, not tangent to said curve, on the north line of said Lot 1, a distance of 246.43 feet to the point of beginning, containing 2.21 acres of land. Section 2, that the city engineers hereby ordered to make the necessary alterations to the official map of the City of New Ulm to reflect this change. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect and shall be enforced 30 days from and after its adoption, approval, and publication.
Thank you. Item 6F, consider a resolution renewing the Farmers Co-op operation, Cooperative of Hanska License Agreement to close off 16th North Street between Lot 1, Block 205, and Lot 7, Block 206, from September 2017 through May 2022.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion?
I've been doing this for years, so just kind of a typical thing, correct? We've been doing this yearly for how many years now?
Yeah.
Except this is for five years.
It's been renewed twice, and we did it periodically earlier. The only changes that are found in this license agreement is the fee went from 500 to 525, and the, there was a clause added that if they were to sell the adjacent land to someone else, that this license agreement would then terminate, which is reasonable. Those are the only two things that were changed.
One comment I want to make, I know that they did this years back, now, the bunker that's actually down by the elevator itself, did we even, did they even use that last year? I just noticed it's starting to fall apart, deteriorate. Is there any way that, we'll do this, but if you're not going to use that bunker, either get rid of it, or it's starting to fall apart?
I can talk to him.
We have somebody here, I think, that could answer that.
Could you step up to the mic, please? Step up to the mic and give your name and address for the record. Let me make it official and really ask.
Otherwise, they can't see you.
Yeah, Jerry Sumoto, the general manager of Farmers Co-op by Hanska.
Okay.
Yeah.
They, I don't think they've used it the last couple of years, correct?
No, we haven't used it for, I've been around a year and a half since also, but as far as I know, they haven't used it for quite a few years.
So is there any way, I mean, making the repairs or just removing it, or?
Yeah, we haven't talked about it as a management team yet, but I, we'll probably just move it out of there at some point here, and we could start working on it, but.
So you'll put it on your agenda to take a look at it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Got that taken care of, Brian.
I don't need to call you now. I don't need to call you now. Thank you.
All right, any more discussion? See you none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6G, consider a motion to receive a petition to construct the roadway improvements on the alley in Block 185 north of Center Street, and set a date for public hearing for Tuesday, September 19, 2017, at 4:30 PM.
Anything on that, Steve, or just?
No, it's, Mr. President, pretty straightforward petition, it was rather strong, 75% of the joining property orders signed the petition, so we'll schedule, if you schedule a public hearing, we'll send out notices and give them information and answer questions.
Great, thank you. Any more questions?
I had a question on the, it was prepared by the Engineers Office in October 11, 2016, received at the Engineers Office in October 2016, and we're sitting a year later. Do we know what?
Mr. President, we received it too late last fall to put it on this year's construction project, and we were quite frank and upfront about that with the individual that was taking around the petition, so the earliest we could get it on is next summer, that's why we just kind of held off on scheduling the hearing. But the resolution, if it's ordered in at the public hearing, is good for a year, so we'll be fine.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it didn't get lost in the alley somewhere.
No.
Right, entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion? See you none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, no? Motion carries. But no more business? Meeting adjourned.